All right, welcome to the February 2nd Wallingford Town Council Ordinance Committee Meeting. Before we get started, I'm just gonna go over a few things in case this is your first remote meeting. Which I doubt it's anybody's first. We have question and answer open to the public on just the agenda items here. We don't have any general Q and A for this meeting. This is a committee. Although the full council is the committee. So if you have something to talk about that's not on the agenda, area grievances this week. For now, we are limiting ourselves to what's on the agenda. If you do wish to comment, you can indicate that in the chat with your name. It'll have your name because you signed in and just indicate that you have a question. And then once the council has cycled through their questions, we'll get to you. If you're on the phone, we'll call, I'll try to remember to ask for anybody on the phone. If they have comments and then we'll go to you. I don't have a gavel. I don't need a gavel. I got Baby Yoda. Baby Yoda will use the force and silence people who talk out of order. So just heads up on that. And with that, I think I've covered all the logistics that everyone is painfully aware of. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Alright, for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, America, and to the republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible. If you could call the roll, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I will do it alphabetically. Fish by. Not here. Laughin.
Here.
Marone.
Here.
Morganstein.
Here.
Shortell.
Here.
Thada.
Here.
Testa. No. I thought I saw Jason. Yeah, Jason's there. And Chairman Servoni.
Here. Hey, we have seven. Thank you, Sherlyn. There's seven counselors. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes from our December 1st Ordinance Committee Meeting. A historic meeting coincidentally, it's the last council meeting that didn't go to almost midnight. So it's history was at that meeting. So I'm gonna motion we approve of those minutes. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Chairman Servoni. Moved in second to discussion. All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Abstentions, motion carries. Moving on, item five, discussion and possible action on advertising in town parks. Let me set this up for everyone. And then I'm gonna turn it over to some of our guests who I see. So fittingly, today's Groundhog Day. You may be thinking, didn't we already talk about this at ordinance committee? We did a couple of years ago. And so it's come back. And what I, my understanding of what is being contemplated is part of what we discussed a couple of years ago, but not all of it. So let me, I'm just gonna explain what I think is being discussed. And then what we're gonna do about it tonight. What I believe is gonna be discussed tonight is the council supports allowing some form of local businesses to advertise on fields, town athletic fields. So not a third party, not like, oh, Little League is gonna run it and Little League is gonna get advertising and they're gonna like put up banner. No, this is the town of Wallingford. As the owner of these fields would in theory control it, get the revenue directly and allow some form of advertising. So that's what I wanna talk about. I wanna get from our guests tonight. First of all, let them flesh out a little more than what I just did of what they're looking at. I wanna answer, have them answer all of your questions as counsel. I want attorney small, who I believe I see is on in the meeting. Attorney small can weigh in based on all of that legally. And then really, I wanna understand too what our jurisdiction is as the council, because to my knowledge, this is more of a zoning. Though it's not clear to me, once we get through all that, are we asked, write a new ordinance, we being, I don't know what we're being asked to amend. So I think attorney small can help us with that once we get to that point. So that's the goal. For what this, what this agenda item is. So I'm going to introduce, I'm gonna turn it over. We have several guests. We have the Parks and Rec Commission, Dave Gilo, Mike Sevenelli, Jason Michael. I don't know if I missed anybody from the commission.
I think Don says on the phone, but I don't know what that.
Okay, Don might be caller one.
Yep, yeah, I'm one of the callers.
Got it. Hey, Don. All right. And we have Kenny Michaels. I see Kenny. Yep. I hear Kenny. I don't see Kenny. Okay, hey Kenny. So I'm going to turn it over to someone, one of you to add to what I've said, maybe give us a little more detail, then we can, we can just talk through what it is you're looking to do.
Sure. Chris, I'll lead off and members of the council, thank you for your time. This is Kenny Michaels, Director of Parks and Recreation. So as, as Councilman Shortell had mentioned, we were at the table, it was probably a little over a year ago with the discussion of advertising in town parks. Really, really didn't pick up any traction, but as, you know, as time went on and we were faced with this pandemic and budget cuts in 2021 and the uncertainty of what the upcoming budget is bringing. You know, we're trying to get creative and look at other sources and other opportunities that may be available for us as a Parks and Recreation Department to create a little bit of revenue through sponsorship and advertising that we can put back into our fields, facilities and pavilions. I guess what we're looking for today, Jason Michael, no relation to myself, he's missing the S on the last name. Has been the spearhead of this. And what we're looking to is enter the room and get the support of the council to have the ability to explore this option. To, to create a plan and start generating an advertising or sponsorship revenue. Jason, am I on the right track?
Yeah, yeah, definitely. And I hope to speak a little bit more with the I feel like I sit in a pretty good position with a 360 degree view of this as I've been, I've been on the rec commission since 12 or 13, I think. I've been to every Little League field in the state, it feels like at this point now, my son went through the whole, the whole gamut of it. And I own three small businesses in town. So I think I see, I see all the angles. I see the needs that the parks have. I see the, that other towns that have done this in a nice and organized way. I actually, when this was a hotter topic with the last director of Park and Rec, I took it, you know, I took the responsibility to call, I think about eight or nine other towns who I knew had advertising in their parks and tried to just get the lay of the land with how they do things. And sometimes it was, I was directed to their town Little League. I think Meriden was the case where there's, I think their Little League handled it at the time. Now, this is going back a few years, so I can't state positively what's happening now. Most of the time I ended up with the Parks and Rec Director or someone that they, they assigned the responsibility to. And I asked the pretty, pretty general questions and mostly about how they go about doing it and the machinations of who solicits, who takes money, how does it work and, and how do they filter the companies that want to advertise? So I've been, you know, knee deep in this for a while now. And like Kenny said, it seems like the climate is right as I can't speak. I'm sure as accurately as he can about his budget needs or budget cuts or or shortfalls of money. It just seemed to make a lot of sense to me that, that it's something that can be done, it can be done well. And not only does it benefit the town where hopefully, you know, pie in the sky that the advertising money goes back into the parks themselves for things that we need and get denied because of, because of money issues. And also on the other side of it, someone like myself, I'm going to advertise there and it's going to bring foot traffic or revenue or increase bottom lines hopefully for, for town owned businesses first and foremost. Who then in turn return a portion of that money to the coffers of the town itself, or, or at least that money goes to the economy here. So to me, it just made sense that that it would be a good thing to explore certainly more thoroughly now than it has been. Cause I mean, this has been on our, kind of on and off our table for it's gotta be four or five years at this point. This, you know, this first being mentioned and, and I'd like to preface all this with our main goal here is, is to get, and I'm not sure if we're gonna, if it's gonna be planning a zoning, if it's gonna be a new ordinance, if it happens, our, our main goal was to, to get permission to do this. We spent a couple of years preparing the community pool presentation. We, we crossed all of our keys, we dotted all of our eyes. We came in with a full package and we did that purposefully. And, and in this case, we purposely not gone into the, the guts of how it would happen if it were allowed. More so, is it even possible? We didn't wanna, we didn't wanna strap ourselves to months and months and months of meetings and, and hashing out ideas and who could do what and how much we could charge and what kind of signs would we have and who would be allowed? If we're just gonna get denied. So we're here to kind of bring it to the forefront again and, and see if it can push forward. And, and like Chris said, everyone had always told us that it was, it was, it was an ordinance thing. You have to go see the ordinance committee. For years, we were told that off and on by different people. And lo and behold, our, before our last park and rec meeting, I, you know, I woke up that morning and I I said, I've never seen the ordinance and I'd never seen the, the stop, you can't do this, you know, on paper. And, you know, I spoke to Chris and we ended up finding out it was, it was planning its own. And so, so I read that and even that to me, I'm certainly not a legal expert, but none of it was very specific. It seems very blanketed and I just think that, that now's the time to really take a look at it. And I think it's a, it's a valuable stream of revenue that could help a valuable asset, which is our parks. And also help out local businesses to gain business. And, and that's about it.
That that makes a lot of sense. I mean, I'm, I'm obviously a big fan. Let me ask you some specifics before I go to attorney small. I just wanna ask, are we, I know you don't have, you just said you didn't, you didn't come here with a detailed plan. Let me just throw some scenarios out at you. The Oakdale wants to sponsor a community pool for a season. You know, is that something that would be allowed? They wanna pay five grand to, for, this is the current pool, sponsor it for a season. Would that be part of, would that be something that you guys would consider?
Ideally, that's, that's exactly what we're looking for. And I'm, and I'll speak to my own business. I have a painting company in town. We've been here for 20 years. And if center field was offered at Vietnam Veterans Field number one, I'll be the first in line to put my banner up there. And I think so would countless other businesses in town. And, and in getting into those details really quickly, the community pool would be, it's a major sponsor to take over the bulk of that pool. That's the, the little things that would probably have to be hashed out. We've thrown around and spitballed about same sized signs, same graphic, like the same fonts, to make it all uniform and you get to put your logo on there, you know? So yes, long answer, sure. I mean, I'd like to see Anthem come in and offer 50,000 a year to sponsor the pool. But, um, you know, that's gotta be but beyond that, I think, I think it really would probably focus on the smaller businesses in town, you know, ABC Landscaping or Larry's Tree Service or, or like I said, you know, Masterpiece Painting or, or, you know, you know, Rick's on Five, you know, I, I can see this being something that once it gets going to be perpetually beneficial over and over and over. So when we need a new swing set or Loveberry Park needs a pavilion, it's, it's a disaster at this point. It's so old. Well, where do we get that money? Well, hey, let's check and see what the advertisements brought in the last four years. Oh, look, we have it. You know, without, without going and asking and asking and being denied because everyone's gonna feel the crunch. And I believe this is, I mean, the economy we have now is a lot like snapping a sheet and we've just snapped it. And it's going to ripple for quite some time. And I just see it as, if people wanna advertise in their businesses, we've obviously explored. And we've looked at Little League's outline for how they handle it nationwide. Every town I've spoken to, I immediately brought up, well, what do you do if, you know, if, you know, VIP adult stores wants to advertise? And, and every town I talked to, they simply after laughing said, well, we tell them no. And, you know, if, if, you know, if you had a, you know, a speakeasy that wants to advertise at Doolittle Park, I, I mean, I, I think it's going to be self policing, number one. I don't think Marlboro is gonna wanna put a banner up at a Little League field. I don't think, you know, Bud Light is gonna wanna sponsor, you know, a playground. So obviously alcohol, anything political, religious, all that stuff. I mean, the board event does it now. The way they have it put together is ridiculously clunky and just about impossible unless you have a child on a basketball team at Lyman Hall and you bring your banner and pull it out before the game, kick it down after the game. Oh, once your child's gone, so is the sponsorship, because no one's going there to put up their banner and take it down every day. And, and it has, I believe the only person, the only company even doing that at football games is Connecticut Orthopedics or one of the orthopedics, because the trainer works for them and he's at the games or she, I don't know if it's a hearsay. But, but they do have good bones and good margins for us to work, work in. And they've gone through the, the rigmarole of the council and, and town and all that stuff. And I, I think it's a good place to start. It's not necessarily the vehicle that I would pick. Because it's so cumbersome and just so hard for any, any business owner to go put their sign out and take it down on, on a game by game basis. But the fact that it's there and already there, I think lends to the success that this could have. I have yet to check with the Athletic Director to see if it has actually made any money at the school since it was implemented. Or how they handled that money or where it went or how it came or when I, I've looked at any of those details yet. Ideally, we'd like to, to have it come in and be used in the parks.
Let me ask about, let me follow up on that. I have another question. I just wanted to sort of flesh out a little bit. Let's, let's take the, the example of community pool. $5,000 comes in, your, your, my understanding is you would want that $5,000 to go into a park and rec account that would not lapse, meaning because, meaning that the 5,000, as, as the budget year ends, the 5,000 would not go away. It's the general fund, it would stay there. And as time goes on, that money accrues and then like you're saying, three years down the line, maybe there's 20,000 in that account and like you need a new backstop at Moran, Kenny can not have to put that in the budget. He can draw. Is, am I accurately describing how you would want it?
Certainly.
That's correct. Yeah, Kenny.
Yeah. So that, so that, that's correct. So currently, right now, there's a Park and Rec Commission endowment that was created prior to me becoming the director. And what, what caused for that to be set up was we, we sometimes will get mailed in donations from people anonymously stating that they, you know, they're making a donation to, which we don't have, the Friends of Parks and Recreation Fund. And the, the Park and Rec Commission Endowment Fund was, was created for monies that would either go, you know, would go into that account. It doesn't lapse. It carries over from year to year. That would be something that we'd be looking to take the sponsorship and advertising money and put in that endowment account or endowment fund. So like you said, down the road, if we need, you know, a new basketball court at Doolittle, I'm not putting it into my budget asking the council and the mayor for, for $20,000 for a new basketball court. I can draw from that, that fund in that account and pay for it outright.
Got it. Now that makes sense. Let me just hit you with another question, because we did get correspondence from the Conservation Commission. And they had expressed, well, they'd asked the question, so I'm gonna ask it on their behalf. Are we talking parks or are we talking athletic fields or open space? I think they have a concern that you're gonna put up these giant billboards like on the, you know, Tyler Mill and everything. So do you wanna speak to that? What, what you're again, I know you don't have a formal proposal, but, but what, what are you thinking in terms of the scope? Cause they definitely, they came to us a year or two ago and then they wrote another letter when this was in the paper that we were gonna talk about this. So I just wanna, if you could address those concerns or maybe specify what you're thinking, Kenny or Jason or any.
Yeah, I, I, I'll take that. And I've spoken with Mary Heffernan in regards to their concerns. And I think initially our thought was to go, you know, parks and ballfields. You know, our intent isn't to put, you know, three foot by six foot billboards down the linear trail sporting advertisement. But I also think we'd be foolish not to explore something if, if a company came forward and, you know, the, the linear trail committee was looking to extend the trail and, and let's just say there's a company out there that wants to donate $10,000 to the extension of the trail or an archway connecting the trail. You know, I think we would at least have to explore it.
Agreed.
I think, I think we try to make it as big a blanket as possible. And if things are chiseled away, then, then so be it. But I, I certainly, no one's sponsoring the Blue Trail at Tyler Mill. I can't see that. I can't see that.
Right. I just wanna go, attorney small, as you listen to all this, tell us what you're thinking. No, tell, maybe don't tell us what you're thinking. Give us your lead.
All right. So with the plan being to have it entirely within the town's control, there could be a legal path to doing this because that would fall into what is considered a government speech under the First Amendment. And so generally speaking, I think that would be the path to doing this legally. It would need to be controlled by the town. The self policing, no, we're not, we would not be having the people who put these signs up. It would be totally controlled by the town in order for this to, to work. And that was the whole purpose of why the Board of Ed's policy was created and was created that tightly because they had to go get a zoning change, because these things are not permitted under zoning. They are considered billboards or offsite advertising. So you'll have to go to the Planning and Zoning Commission to discuss that in terms of this. But in terms of putting zoning aside, in terms of a legal path and not running into trouble under the First Amendment, I think that, you know, given that it would be totally controlled by the town, that would be a viable legal option. I would like to update my legal research on that. I had already started to do that. I'll give an example of a case. It did involve a school, but it follows under government speech where the school allowed, it was essentially thanking sponsors. So you had, the school had signs at their athletic fields. The signs were all uniform. They were in school colors. They had the school's logo on there and they sought to eliminate one of the sponsors for reasons I won't go into. And the sponsor claimed First Amendment rights and the court upheld what the school did because it fell into government speech. So when government speaks, it doesn't have the same rules. So when we were talking earlier about the leagues running this, this idea of Budweiser coming in and saying, I wanna put a sign up, you, you can't laugh that off because in fact they would have, because it was privately one, they would have a First Amendment right to do the same thing. But once we get into the category of government speech, then we can have far more control. So it is viable at this point in time to do what's being suggested. So, you know, I'm you know, the devil is in the details. So I think everybody needs to start thinking about what that would look like, what they would want. I think the money part is probably the last to worry about. I believe right now the Parks and Rec, the council, in, in the course of approving budgets, approved special special funds for them now where they have, because they collect revenue, they have, I did have a brief conversation with Jim Bose about this. So I don't, I don't think that that's the biggest hurdle. I think the hurdle will be primarily just making sure that we're, we're in good territory, calling this government speech, which I, I tend to think that we are. But then the zoning issue is the predominant issue at this point in time. These are not allowed. Particularly in residential zones, this is considered offsite advertising, which is not permitted. So that would have to be addressed. I do have some legal concerns about that, but that's, you know, we have to think those things out and talk to the zoning commission about them.
Janice, thank you, thank you for that. So, so in terms of the council, we don't have, based on what I'm hearing, we're not gonna amend an ordinance or create a new one based on.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna say we're not necessarily, I think, you know, the, let's assume that I come back in the next meeting and say, look, I finished my research and I'm satisfied. We can create something that's government. We, we would at the very least need a policy, but it may be in the form of an ordinance once you get past the zoning hurdles. So I don't wanna say that we won't. It may actually be better to have an ordinance. I'd have to give that some further thought, but assuming everything is a go, I think the next spot, next place you'd go would be the zoning commission.
Got it. Okay. And, you know, and we could also, the council could pass a resolution just supporting the concept.
Yeah, we would, you know, at a minimum, just because we have to worry about the First Amendment, at a minimum, we would have, Parks and Rec would have a very stringent policy. But I'm not so sure. It may actually be best that it be in some form of an ordinance. So we'll have to wait and see.
Okay. All right. I'm gonna open it up to the council. I know Counselor Laughin, you wanted to speak.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman Shortell. I was really concerned about this until Jason explained that he was not gonna put speakeasy advertisements up. So I was really concerned about the speakeasies in Wallingford. I'm all set now. I'm in full support. I know, I, I think this, I think this works. Everything you've said has worked. We have a, we have a pretty strong Parks and Rec Commission. Not, I'm not just saying that because four of you are here right now. But we do, and I think you work well with the department leadership. I think that, that is a pretty solid way to approach all this. The, the government speech thing is, is great to hear. And so I'm very comfortable and supportive in whatever you need going forward with planning and zoning and, and whatever Janice is doing. So you know, thank you guys for, for everything you do. I just wanted to keep it quick and simple. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. I don't see any, any other questions from the council. I'm gonna throw a question out to the council, just to make sure. Are there any counselors who object to this? Are there any counselors who have reservations? Speak now. Me, probably speak again, because we'll probably beat this up for a year. But anyway, speak now. Okay. I just wanna be clear. We, that was part of tonight was just to, I didn't think there were any, any objections. I, I just wanna make, I'm gonna go, let me go to the public. Any questions from anybody in the public? I don't know, anybody from the public, even here tonight on the phone, but okay. All right. So I think Kenny and Jason and everyone, I think you, it's pretty clear you have the council's support on this. I would, I would just editorialize a little bit with it. I was on the Board of Ed with Councilor Marone when they passed that version of the policy. What you guys do next, it has to be better than the Board of Ed's. Like it has to be, it can't. I mean, the Board of Ed's is way too restrictive. I understand it's that way for a reason, but, but I hope the end result of what you're gonna do is gonna be a little bit, a lot more than what, what they do. I mean, it has to be. So I, that's just my editorial on that. Nothing against their policy. It's a good starting point. And I know you guys are redlining that and looking at that, which is great. So do you, Kenny, do you have anything else on this or Jason or anyone else? Anything else you wanna add? Or do you have?
I, I think we covered just about everything. I mean, this opens the, the door to a lot of different possibilities. I mean, I know, just to circle back to how you mentioned, you know, sponsorship at the pool. Well, this can also get into sponsorship of our concerts. You know, we can have one sponsor for all five concerts, or we can do sponsorship for each individual concert. There's a lot of potential here and, and to coin the phrase in our field, the benefits are endless. There, there's a lot that could be done with this.
Totally, totally agree. All right. Well, hopefully this time we can get it done. So we'll be anxiously awaiting updates and, and like I said, I just wanna reiterate something. I don't want to get lost in the shuffle. While there may be an ordinance we may craft down the road, you know, there is nothing preventing the council in a meeting or two from just passing a resolution, cheerleading you guys, saying, we the town council support this. So if you think about that, because I, I'll sponsor it and I'm sure I'd have enough people that will. Think about that, because I, I'll sponsor it. And I'm sure I'd have enough people willing to second it. Just, just to sort of. You know, give you guys what you, if you need. I don't think, I think this is a no brainer. I don't know why you'd have any opposition frankly, but you know, it's Wallingford. So who knows? Um. Alright, if that's all, uh. I did intentionally put you first on the agenda to spare you the pain of the rest of our meeting. So. You're free to stay, but I'm, I'm gonna move on to the next agenda item, which is item six. So thank you for coming up, coming on.
Thank you. Before you leave, I wanna thank you all. Thank you for putting us on the agenda. Thank you for putting us ahead of everything, Chris. And I thank you for your support.
Wrong. You're welcome. Okay, uh, item six, discussion and possible action on chapter 139 littering. This is. Counselor Zandry's item that he brought to us. Uh. It feels like 10 years ago. I guess it was only a few meetings, a few meetings ago. And uh, we've been, we, I think we all agree on it. We're just kind of, Attorney Small's been refining the language and we have a memo from Attorney Small dated January 29th. That um. It appears the ordinance is lacking a section on dumping as opposed to littering. Therefore, Janice is creating a separate section for dumping and as a result, and rewriting the entire ordinance. Wow, that's, that's fun stuff. Um, so at tonight's meeting, Janice, you wanna cover dumping prohibitions and fines. Littering fines and then other provisions that we can include in the ordinance. So.
Well, talk about meaningful. This is, you know, this trash of my life these days. Um, I just went, just to give you, I was going, originally I was gonna give you a draft of my littering ordinance, but I really, I've, I've got a lot of work to do on it. Um. And I just, you know, we also have a solid waste ordinance, which also has some penalties for failure to file rules and. Um. The dumping section technically could be in there, but I, I'll probably keep it in the littering section. So I'm looking at the two of them as to whether or not, and some. They could technically be combined, but I'll, I'll keep them separate. But. So dumping is really what we're talking about. And dumping is not just this one cubic foot. Dumping could be, as you know, furniture, automobiles, automobile parts and whatnot. So that's what I'm working on in. In terms of putting into. The ordinance. Um. And the statutes are really very difficult. They appear to contradict each other. And I've been really very frustrated in going through them, but I'm, I am working my way through it. I do think one of the things that I think we should talk about or think about. In terms of the example. That we've been talking about of people dumping. Their personal or business trash into town receptacles. That is an infraction. So. I'm kinda think, so that would be a $75 fine. And that's a simple, you know, the police officer issues it in infraction. I'm kinda thinking that we ought to keep it that simple, that it should just be, that part of that should just be. Um, an infraction as opposed to creating something different. Um. I don't know, you know, if you have any particular thoughts about that. I think it just makes it a simpler thing. To issue a citation or you issue an infraction. Uh, $75 in town doesn't get all the money to stake it some of that money. Um. If we split it 50 50 basically. But. I do think that's, in terms of that isolated event, that is a. Simpler way of dealing with it. I do think in that case, though, we would probably have to have some type of sign saying. You know, a violation of this creates, you, you'll be subject to being. Um, issued an infraction. Um. I'm still checking to make sure that's mandatory. I kinda think that it is. Um, so I don't know if anybody has any reaction to that. Um, so I can stop here if you wish.
Counselor Zandry.
Yeah, so I just, I, I just wanna, um. Kinda come, come back to center on this because we, we talked about a lot of different things over the course of this, like. Counselor Chertel was saying, you know, it seems like it's been years we've been talking about it. I, I guess what I'm trying to do. Is. Really get it so that. This comes into more focus. I, I think the issue that we're seeing is. People don't think there is anything the matter with. Putting the household trash in there and they're over stuffing the barrels and they're leaving stuff on the side and stuff blows away and. You know, it becomes a couch cushion that they can't get rid of. And. It, it makes, it makes for all this, this additional stuff. Like I said, I, we've had exaggerated. Situations at the parks where we've actually had homeowners call Public Works. They'll go and dump and they'll walk right across the street to the empty pail and fill it up. So. You know, again, it, the discussion we've been having was, you know, gee, we really didn't wanna make this all about, you know, finding everybody, but we needed something to have teeth. And so. You know, I, I kinda wanna. Make sure that we're all on the same page or our thoughts drifting, you know, I kinda make a general ask of that. Does anybody have any thoughts on that or?
Yeah, I, I thought, and I, I apologize because I do, it, it's all blending together for me. I thought we had talked about a scale, like the first offense and the second offense. And then I know we. We talked about enforceability, but I, I. Agree. With what you're saying that, that I, I, the intention was to jack up the fine a bit. And put it on a sign. To give people pause. I thought that's what we were going for. I know there was, I know there was a lot of discussion in previous meetings about. Yeah, what constituted dumping? You know, was it the three bags of household trash or someone? Shoves a big takeout container from somewhere, you know, I know we, we got hung up on that a little bit, but I, I, I thought. I'm generally agreeing with what you're saying and what your recollection was.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, the, the other, the other side of it too is, is the dumping. We're, we're, we're seeing more and more of it. And I know like, you know, the winter months we don't. But then when the springtime comes. It just becomes. A, a habit for some people just to discard stuff that way. It's $25 to get rid of an air conditioner and it costs nothing to just have it fall off the truck. So.
But I think if we have the sign on stating that if you do this, this is an infraction, it, I think there's your notice that you're concerned about. There's your, oh, wait a minute, I'm not supposed to do this and I could be. Issued an infraction if I do this. It's not even really about the money. It's, there is the notice to the, to the person who's about to do it that. Oh, I can get in trouble for this kind of thing.
And then I guess I have another question too. Um, you know, throughout the town. Depending on where you drive, there are, there are signs that says fine for littering. And I don't think, there's not a lot of them. There's maybe six and I could probably only remember two of them. If I needed to drive to one tonight, but every single one of them says something different. $170 fine, $350 fine, $50 fine. Maybe we should go back to these signs and, and get, you know. Some sort of common language and put them on those. Those. You know, as informational, because every single time you see a fine for littering and it's a different fine. So. I mean, I don't know if it's based on watershed area or. You know, something else, but they're all different.
There actually are in terms of, um. I don't know, Mr. Chairman, is it okay that I jump in like this? Um.
It's fine, it's fine.
There, if you're, if you're issuing citations, there actually are different ones. So the one for doing what we just talked about is $75 under the state's. Um, infraction code. Plain litter, simple littering is $219. Um, littering on public land, which essentially is in parks. Um, can be $319. And what happens is you're issued the littering ticket. For $219 in the court, when you go to court for the infraction. Can add another hundred dollars. Um, punishment for, because you did it in a public park. So there are, but I think you, you're right. When you, maybe we need to think about what is actually out there. I'm not sure that that's. Why they're different or they're different because. They were put up at different times in, in history or something. So that may be more the real reason, but. I mean, it's a good inquiry, but I just want you to know that there actually are all kinds of different numbers depending on which, which situation you're talking about.
Um. But Council Morganstein, you've had, I just wanted to let you jump in here.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah. So, well, it sounds to me like Janice has some thought process of. What's litter, you know, these different definitions? And of course there's the state ordinances and such. So I think that the rehashing of the. Is it in a park or um, the garbage pails, which is one of the big issues? Or is it the? Um, couch in front of the lawn or down over a hill? Um, Janice, am I right to kind of interpret what you initially said? That. You can in reworking all of this kind of take what we've already discussed. To help to flush out which is what for us?
Yeah, I think, I think I can do that. And I think that I can, you know, probably give you some options. I really, I really intended to give you a draft. For today's meeting and I just decided it just wasn't ready. And. In particular, dealing with the dumping, you know, really coming to realize that dumping is really like a separate category. It's not really littering. It's, it's beyond littering. Um, and can in fact include haulers. There is a separate section for them. Um. In terms of them dumping improperly. So. You know, I do need more time to do it. It's, these statutes are incredibly annoying. Um, to figure out what I, to make sure I'm doing it right, but. I'll try to give you some choices in that. I just wanted, wanted to just touch base with you on it and. I do, I am leaning, I, I probably will give you another option, but I really think that in terms of people putting stuff in a receptacle. Um. The infraction aspect may be the simplest and if we, if their signage may be the most um. Effective. Um. You know, the dumping, you know, there's a whole procedure for, so somebody dumps their furniture. Into an area, there's a whole procedure in the statutes for doing an investigation. Um, sending them notice, telling them to get the stuff out of there. Um, and the fines actually can go up to $10,000. I mean, it's really, it's quite an involved process. And I think, you know, we should be prepared for. Dealing with. Serious dumping. Um, instances because, you know, they probably are happening and um. It would be good to have the procedure laid out. So that's what I'm working on.
Just, just to clarify on the littering, the, the $75, do we have the, how high can we raise that? Or is that where it comes into conflict with the state?
Well, if we don't use it as an infraction, um, the fine can go up to. I think it's $199.
But if, alright, so you're saying if we don't use it as an infr- but if we. Do it, I, I get found a little bit lost. What is the infraction? Why is that?
The, the state issues a schedule of, of fines for infractions. So it's, it's technically, you know, it's like. Something smaller than being arrested. I mean, you're issued it by the police. You can go to court to challenge it. Um, but this, the fine itself is set by the state.
Okay.
And they have a very specific one for that. So we can, you know, we can not use the infraction process and do the ordinance. The fine for, I'm just gonna call it simple littering for tonight would be a maximum of $199.
So you, okay, so I feel like you are giving us, even though you don't have the draft, you are kinda giving us something to chew on philosophically. You know, the word infraction and all it brings with it versus a hefty or fine. And I guess the question that I don't have an answer is, does that, does the average person know? What an infraction is, that that means what that. What that means. I, I, you know.
I think the notice, if we posted some type of a sign. Um, let's assume that that was something that's, that's doable. It would say, I think it would say right on it that the, it's a $75 fine for doing this.
No, no, I know that, but I'm saying the infraction part, like, like you're kinda saying that the word infraction. Connotes this whole police process that no one wants to go through and that's supposed to be scary. But I'm saying, do people know that? That's what I'm saying. Do people.
Okay, I see.
In, it's like a, it's like, you know, I gotta go to court. I gotta do, you know, that's what I'm, I'm just wondering. And I don't have any, that's all.
Okay.
So, okay, um, I think then we'll, we'll, you'll have a draft on our next meeting on March 2nd.
Yes.
So your life will continue to be all about garbage.
My life is all about garbage. But hey, I did tell you. That a one cubic square foot. Is approximately half of a kitchen bag. And just in case you were wondering. A one cubic foot of beach sand weighs about 95 pounds. That's the research I've been doing for you people.
On behalf of the council, thank you. Um. Alright, and we, I, I think we're good. Anyone have any other questions or comments for Attorney Small? Okay. Members of the public. Okay. Moving on. Item seven. Discussion and possible action. On the cap. And the amount of money in the general fund. This is also Counselor Zandry's item. Uh, and Janice, you wrote us a memo. With uh. I feel like a kind of a, a ruling on this. So do you wanna just? Walk through that? Or do you want me to read it? Or how do you wanna cover it?
Um, well, I mean, basically what I've said is certainly the charter could do something like this, but short of. Uh, charter revision, and I think you run into trouble doing that by ordinance because you step on the council's. Power, possibly the mayor's position's power. Um, and it is something in terms of controlling how much is, is in surplus, you have the ability to deal with it. Now, particularly at budget times. Um. So I mean, that's really kind of the gist is that yes, by charter. Um. Probably no by, by ordinance, although, you know, we were talking in generalities and I don't, I mean, I don't wanna just. Say absolutely not if you had a specific proposal that you were thinking of, but I think it would be very difficult to do by ordinance.
Under, okay, understood. I, I do wanna, because one of the things that we talked about at our last meeting was the analogy. Of the health fund ordinance. And you said in your memo. Um. You didn't really. That was a good comparison. And you're, if I'm reading the memo correctly, you're saying that the town. The town has to fund its health insurance obligations, whether or not there's an ordinance. So therefore. I'll citing. The ordn- the health fund ordinance, which mandates 20% above the expected claim level be in the, in the health fund. You're saying. Well, the town legally has to do that anyway. So the ordinance doesn't make the town do that. The law makes the town do that. Is, am I reading your memo correctly?
Well, the town has to fulfill its. Legal obligations in the fund. If you don't wanna have a, um. The 20%, you don't have to, you don't have to put it there. You can take it out. Um, I think that was based upon the experts' recommendation. So the health fund, because it's, you know, it's town money, it's employees' money. The whole point of it to be in a fund is that. Otherwise, you would have all these payments coming in and out and the, the. So called, you know, revenue of the health fund. In and out of the general fund. I mean, it just, that just doesn't make any sense. So you put it in its own fund. Um. So if the town, if the council says, well, you know what, we don't, we don't wanna have a 20%. I mean, the 20% keep in mind is. It's a fluid number. I mean, this, this isn't, this is a fund. That pays out, takes in, pays out, takes in. Depending on the experience, it could be a good year, it could be a bad year. Um, you know, whether or not at any given time you have a full 20%, I don't know. You don't. Um, I think we've run into problems with that recently. So, but if the council says, well, you know what, we're just not, I mean, you do it at budget time. If you say, you know what, we're just not gonna do it. I mean, I certainly would recommend you revisit the, the ordinance that you created. Um. But. It is, it's not the same thing as, as. The general fund surplus. It's not the same thing.
Well, let me, let me, let me challenge a little of that. So, so the, the ordinance we're talking about, I, you talked, spoke to this, yes, it creates a health fund. Just exactly the way you described, so that you're not paying the claims out of the general fund. That is absolutely true. The 20% is a stipulation within the ordinance though, and the number is fluid, but the percentage is not. And that is a standard practice. And the reason where that number comes from, that 20% is simply that when you're self insured. You have extra insurance called stop loss. And that extra insurance doesn't kick in at dollar one. When your self insurance, when you hit. So Anthem gives us a number. They say the town of Wallingford. We think based on your claims, it's town and Board of Ed, it's rated as one group. We think you're gonna have, I'm making this up. $26 million in healthcare claims based on our. Analysis. So you gotta have $26 million ready, plus 20%. Because your stop loss coverage doesn't kick in until after you, it's like a deductible. It's like a giant deductible. Doesn't kick, 20% gets hit. That's a biz, that's a business practice. That's what it's there for. So I believe, now I wasn't, I believe this ordinance was passed in 2008. Which was well before my time. But I believe the intent was. To not keep the 20% in the general fund. The intent was because we all talk about the general fu- you know, the general fund, you have the, the unassigned balance. But even now, you know, we always talk about the credit rating. Well, we keep that, most of that for the credit rating, but that's a choice. That's, there is no. The credit rating is also, so that's not like a, a, that's a policy. That's not legal. And this is the same thing. And this is the same thing. When you look at that general fund, um, we'd have to pay out of that money that we say is for the credit rating. We'd have to borrow or take from that money. So, so I, um, when I read your memo, I guess my, and you, you kind of just said this, Janice. I kind of felt like, well, if the town has to legally, you know, obviously you have to legally pay our health insurance claims. Why do we have this or, why do we have, why do we have that component of the ordinance in the first place? Why did the council in 2008 put the 20%? I mean, I know why they, they landed on 20%, but to me, it's, it's, it's repetitive then. I don't know. So I, I don't want to, I, I feel like this is almost another rabbit hole. Um, but I, I don't know. I do feel like it's still somewhat of a valid comparison. And the fact is, we're not following it right now. We, we just came up in our budget hearings last year. And Mr. Bose said, we're trying to catch up. And that's where we kind of left it. Um, you know, which raises a whole nother philosophical question. We don't, if we're not following an ordinance, does, what is, what does that mean? Like, we just don't follow an ordinance because we don't, I guess. And there's no consequence. So I, there's a lot of, anyway, there's just a lot of little rabbit holes off of this one. But, um, Counselor Zandry, I'm going to stop talking and go to you.
Yeah, I, I, you know, again, this is, this is another one of those things that we've been kind of working on for a little while and, and trying to get some more information. So I got to kind of refresh my own memory on it because, you know, I had discussed earlier about the fact that, you know, there's a state law that caps the reserve of the general fund at the state level at 15%. So I, that was really the crux of where I brought this whole item up in the first place. I figure if the state of Connecticut can create a law that creates a, a maximum cap, why can't we create an ordinance to do the same thing? I understand that we have the capability to do X, Y, and Z. And, you know, we could slide money in, the mayor could veto, and, you know, we could override the veto, he could put it in himself. But if there's a cap, it forces somebody's hand, and it's any mayor. Uh, you know, if there's an, if there's a future mayor that, that raises a lot of taxes and takes in a lot of revenue and that just keeps growing the pot, he's not allowed to. There's a law there that says, that's it. This stuff has to be put into something and executed. And that's really where this kind of came from. So why is it again that we can't create something that mirrors what the state does with its own law?
Because the state of Connecticut is king, as I've often told you. The state of Connecticut can create those laws. You, because you are a political subdivision of the state, can do so in your charter. That's, that's where, that's your enabling authority. So if the enabling authority allows you to do that, you can do that. So you can put that in the charter. Or you can put language in the charter that allows the council to do that by ordinance. But you can't do something by ordinance that would trump the charter. That's, that's the difference. The state is always king. The state can pass any law that it wants.
Right, but is there anything in the charter that says we can't do this?
Well, as I said in the memo, you're interfering with powers in the charter. That's, you can't do that. You can't interfere with, with the powers that are set forth therein. So that's why you would need to put the change into the charter itself.
We'll never, we'll never get that in the charter. If this thing is just going to fall that way, that'll, that'll be the end of the discussion on it. And I, I think it's unfortunate, but I, I, I don't have a further argument on it. Because to me, I, I don't see the specific thing in the charter says we can't do this. But it's, it's a piece of a number of different articles that are written in there that basically define what we can do and what we can't do. But it's not this one particular item. It's set forth in all of the rules. So I, I think with that kind of a discussion point, we could go and say, a lot of the ordinances wouldn't matter then. We create these ordinances and as long as they stay completely on one side of the fence. But I bet we could argue there's quite a few things that step over the fence, but it's not my expertise.
Okay, uh, well, I hear you. Um, any other counselors have anything they want to add? I do have member of the public who wants to speak. I just want to give the council a chance. Any other counselors? I don't see anything in the chat. Mr. Chardulo, can you, uh, if you want to speak?
Do you want to speak? Yes, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Let me turn my phone off. Yeah, I've had a technical problem in the past where when I use this particular app, my audio wouldn't come through. Oh. But, uh, so now it works, which is good. Uh, yeah, I mean, I was, I was actually prepared to come here in support of creating a cap. Because I think the cap is, um, you know, is long overdue. I think without a cap, what, what happens is, uh, what has happened, which is the general fund tends to creep up every year. If you go back and look in 2011, the general fund surplus was, I think around 21 million. And now, uh, this year, in fact, I guess the audit was just posted a couple of days ago, state audit. Uh, we're sitting at about almost 29 million. So that's $8 million. So a cap, I think, would be a good thing in terms of preventing that. Uh, and then we can get into the amount. But I guess we're stuck on whether the, whether this is legal or not. I believe that it's perfectly legal for you to do it. I see nothing in the charter that prevents the town council from doing this, the way it's written, it's the way I see it. Um, I know that, um, previously I had, in fact, Jason and I were talking and I, I asked him about it. And he, I think he supports this, but maybe he doesn't. We talked, talked about the idea of creating an ordinance that would return any surplus at the end of the year, instead of having it just flow into the general fund and keeping it there in perpetuity to, uh, put it into a, a tax credit ordinance. And I'm not sure where that's at. Uh, I do recall at the time talking to Chairman Savoni about, and he indicated that he thought, quote unquote, he thought it wasn't legal. And again, I challenge that. I don't see anything, I, I couldn't find anything in state statutes. And I certainly couldn't find anything in the charter that would prevent the premier law-setting body, which is the town council and you're a subdivision of that, from doing it. I mean, you guys write the law for the town. Um, I'm not sure how this gets resolved, uh, but I think it's something that should be pursued, the legality of it. I know that, uh, Attorney Senior, uh, Farrell Senior sent a letter on it. And I, I received a copy of the letter he sent it to, I think it was the town council, or maybe it was just Chairman Savoni. And it was a three to four paragraph letter, but it didn't, in the end, to me, it didn't really state that we, we couldn't create this ordinance. It's kind of like discussing it, uh, we're discussing right now. So we're, we're at a legal loggerhead here. I don't know what we can do to, uh, take it to a different level or talk to some other resource. Uh, but I certainly think we, we could use that, that cap would be a very good thing. That's my, that's my input, my comment.
Okay, okay. Appreciate that, appreciate that. Okay, uh, any other comments from the public? Janice, I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask you two loaded questions.
I'm here.
Here we go. Uh, so I, I, I'm not necessarily support, I, I think I've been on the record. I'm not necessarily supportive of, of this concept. I love to talk and the, I love exploring a poss- possibilities. I, I just don't want to tie any future council or mayor's hands. But my question is, how could the council get another legal opinion? And I, what I'm, don't get mad, don't get mad. What I'm saying is you work for the mayor. And I'm not trying to be, you know, you work for the mayor. Mayor's been in office for 100 years. You guys have, you know, you, you, you're going to look at things a certain way. Lawyers have been known to disagree. Lawyers can look, two lawyers can look at the same law and come up to very different conclusions. I mean, we see it all the time, like Fishbine and everyone else. So, um, you know, I'm just, as a non-lawyer, I'm just struggling, what I'm trying to understand is, I kind of agree with you on this. It's, this is me playing devil's advocate. I'm just, I'm just putting this out there. Like, how would a town council, you know, you, you render, we asked you for an opinion, you do all this work, you, you give us research, you give us an opinion. Could the council go to outside attorney and get a second opinion? Like, could Jason do that if he really wanted to?
Well, Jason can't do that, but, um, hold on a second here. The council may at his discretion appoint outside counsel to represent the council on this. So you can, the council can, I mean, you'd have to have the money. And by the way, I work for the town of Wallingford.
Okay.
That's who I work for. And that's who I issued the opinion for. I did not consult the mayor on the opinion. I did consult the town attorney, but I did not consult the mayor on writing that opinion.
I'm sorry.
Oh, that's fine, that's fine. I, you're, you're correct. I am appointed by the mayor. I get that. But, so, I mean, the council has historically a few times, um, obtained an outside opinion. Um, I mean, I'm going to have to think about how it was done, but I don't know if you have, do you have any money?
We are. Phone's still in the room. I was just in there last week. The phone's still there. We cut the phone line.
I think, um, I mean, I'd have to look at how mechanically you did it, um, or the council did it. I don't know if, um, our budget was involved or not. I'd have to check that. But it has been done a few times over the years.
Okay, well, I would, yeah, I would think we would, at, at budget time, that's when we, we're coming up on budget time. So the timing is good. If this was something that, you know, Counselor Zandry was dispassionate about, or any council was passionate about, on any, any issue, they could, they could, he or she could make a motion to add X amount of dollars. And what, what's, what's the going rate? I don't even want to know what the going, you know what, don't answer that. Um, you know, add, you know, 20 grand or 30 grand or something, I don't know, like to hire outside attorney to get an opinion on some issue. I was, I would assume that's how we would do it. Uh, but I'm just, I just, Mr. Chardulo's comments made me think of that. And I just thought I would throw it out there. So I appreciate your, your answer. Um, okay. Uh, Janice, my other, my other loaded question, because I'm still hung up on this and I'm sorry, I'm not sorry, I'm hung up on it. So, so should we, should the council repeal that aspect of the health fund ordinance that stipulates the 20%? Because it sounds like in your memo that that's irrelevant. We don't need to say 20% because the town legally has to pay it one way or the other.
Okay, I'm not saying it's irrelevant at all. And, you know, before you did something like that, I would suggest you talk to the experts on the fund and the necessity of it. That's not me. Um, it's not irrelevant. I'm just saying it was, you know, the whole point of creating this, it's, it's, if not, it all runs through the general fund. So you have money that belongs to employees, which shows up as revenue in the general fund. And that's the whole point of creating this thing. But if you don't like an aspect of it, then I would, one, get advice from those people. And maybe you don't need, I don't know if you need it or not. Um.
Yeah, no, I'm not, agreed. But this is not about, this, yeah, the, what I'm, the 20% is not about the existence of the fund as a separate from the general fund. We all agree on that. The 20%.
Right.
Because I, I frankly think it's the perfect analogy to what Jason's trying to do. And I'm, and no offense, I'm unconvinced by your arguments in the memo that it's not.
That's all right. People disagree with me all the time. But, you know, I mean, certainly you can, so let's say, you know, it's, so it's the difference between, you know, it's that area between the stopgap and whatever. Um, you know, you can revisit that. You can say it's not necessary. You can say, you know what, maybe the language should say something more vague than specifically 20%. I don't know. That's really for some other expert to say. So obviously the council is free to reexamine that. And, um, if it's not a good idea, then don't do it.
Understood, understood. But I think what I'm, what I'm driving at is 13 years ago, that got in there to that ordinance and nobody objected to it. Nobody said, oh, no, 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 we, we create the health fund, yes, check. Different, you know, than the general fund. You guys can't do 20% though. That's dictating to the mayor. Like, no one, no one objected to that. I guess that's my, there's a precedent that was set. And so the arguments that are being made tonight don't seem to have been made back then. And I, and I'm not, I, look, we're all human. I'm just trying to, that's what I'm kind of, um, that's all I'm trying to, I'm wrestling with. I, you know, uh, so I, I just, anyway, I'm beating a dead horse in honor of absent Counselor Fishbine. Um, I'm just going to keep making fun of him, see if he watches the meeting. All right, Mr. Chardulo, you have another comment, but I'm going to hold you to the time limit. So you get, you get three minutes.
Okay, I got three minutes?
You got three minutes.
I, I really, I just have a few seconds to make a comment. Because I was, I was considering something in the context of the general fund. But given that we've run into a potential legal matter, one thing that you might want to consider is, um, to create a rainy day fund. Okay, because, uh, and you could take the, what is the uncommitted dollars? The uncommitted portion of the, uh, general fund. And just instead of calling it uncommitted, call it a rainy day fund. Because that's really what it is. And it's, it's been, as you know, it's been a great source of confusion. Every time we, we get into terminology, when people ask questions about, okay, what's the, what's the general fund surplus? And you, we have all kinds of conversations about it. And when it's all over, uh, there's no certainty about what's in that fund. You know, you have reserve funds, you have committed funds, uh, you have uncommitted, et cetera. So, and I think there is a desire for, for clarity to just create a fund called the rainy day fund. And then decide how much money you want to put into it. And you can review it, you know, once a year, whatever. Just a suggestion. Thank you.
Good, thank you. All right. Uh, Counselor Zandry, this is your item. We've beaten it up for a few meetings. Uh, I don't know, the path forward to me is to, to me, there's two paths forward. You can tell me what you think, if you're finding missing one. One path forward is you come back to us with a specific draft of a specific ordinance. You know, it caps it, it X percent, like just really specific, here's the ordinance. You just, we just keep going and we just vote on it. Another path forward could be we, we, you make a motion to get outside attorney to get another opinion during the budget season. And we see if people, I don't know, but I feel like we need, we're at a point with this, I don't know where else to go with it. So I'm going to get your thoughts, because I don't want, I don't want to just pull it off the agenda. But I don't, I don't know what else, I feel like we, we're kind of at an impasse.
Yeah, I ca- I, I kind of agree with you because, I mean, at this point, I, we have a couple of problems the way I see it. Right now, there's, there's been a level of commitment by everybody to at least discuss it, which is always good. Um, I, I don't know exactly how much support there is. So I, I don't want to attempt to come into budget season earmark some funds to go get legal advice. Um, you know, on something that, you know, we can end up expending it and end up voting no on it. So, I mean, I'd almost rather find a way to put this, I, I have to think about it. You know, obviously, I, I'd almost want to put it to a vote. Because if it basically goes down, if it, if it basically goes downward, there's not enough support for it, then to me, there's no, I could go get funds, put them aside in the budget, spend them, get a legal opinion that we could do this. And still, there would be not enough votes to pass it. So it's wasting money, which is not what I want to do. So I, I almost would rather see, I don't know if we pose it as an informal question when all nine of us are here. I don't know how that would work, but I mean, there isn't support, if there, if there's not enough support for it, then it kind of dies right there.
Let me, let me, let me throw, no, I agree with you. Let me throw out a hypothetical right now to the, to those counselors who are present. If, assuming that we could get another lawyer to come in and look at the same stuff and say, yeah, you guys can do this. Assuming we could do, assuming that was the case, would you be supportive? Would you vote for such an ordinance? Counselors, you're laughing.
Thanks. No, I wouldn't because kind of what I, I think I said in a previous meeting, we'd be setting an ordinance to, to kind of tie down a future council or mayor. But then that, that council could just change the ordinance. So it seems like it's a lot of extra stuff. For nothing, it's not strong enough, if, if that's what you want. Now, it's not something I support anyway in concept. But if you were going to do this, you need to do something that, uh, But if you were gonna do this, you need to do something that a, that a council cannot willy-nilly just change on their own. Um, and I think every, you know, every year, when we do a budget, there's a way, there are different mechanisms in place to handle similar, similarly handle this to as what Mr. Tardulo was saying, you know, create the rainy day fund, which is funny, because forever, that's what the, the opponents kept calling it. And so finally, it just got clearer and clearer. Okay, we can't call it that anymore, because that's not what it technically is. Uh, and to create one, yeah, sure, we could. But I, you know, I, I guess I kind of appreciate the fact that the announcement, we'd have to create one, because it doesn't already exist. Um, no, it, it wouldn't, it wouldn't do anything. It, the council, whatever council could just change. You got seven counselors, change the law every year, whatever we wanted to do, whatever. It, you, you need, if you're gonna do it, it'd have to be in the charter.
Okay, uh, Council Morganstein, what are your thoughts? Would you vote for this if it were doable?
Yeah, so my sense is that, um, no offense against Janice, but yeah, I would be in favor of supporting inquiring. And certainly if you're in the process of inquiring, then some of the more details of how to do it, that Tom seems to have some objection to, could also be looked at. Charters do get opened and councils honestly don't really change every two years. We've got kind of the same people lasting for a while. So, so the idea that things would flip flop quickly. In Wallingford, that doesn't happen a lot. So yes, I, I would support that if we wanted to look into this, I would support it.
Thank you, Gina. In 338 days, you're getting at least one new counselor. Councilor Marone, if you're, if you're with us, would you vote for this? If it were doable?
So way to call me out, Chris. So I would have some reservations about this. Um, I don't know that you can, I have, I have a few reservations about this, I guess. I don't think it's a bad idea, but I think we're reacting to a situation that we have now as opposed to what could be in the future. I mean, the public gets, every two years, they get a choice of who's on the council, who's in the mayor's office. So if you don't like how things are being run, you know, part of this is, is a reaction to how things are being run right now. So I don't know. I guess I'd have to see what the final, what the, the final outcome was, or what, what the final item we were gonna vote on was, but I'm not sure that I would support this.
Okay. Appreciate that. Councilor Todd, I heard, I saw you shake your head. I don't know if you want to add anything.
Yeah, I, I don't, even if, I think even if we had an outside attorney say that, that we could do it, I don't think I would be supportive of it. I just don't really see the need. Um, and I think we can, the council can use up a budget time to, to maybe spend some of that if we, if we kind of thought it was getting a little bit too high. So, um, I just, I don't think I would, would be in support of it either way.
Thank you. Uh, I'm, I'm with you. Again, I appreciate the discussion. I, I, I just, uh, I, I would generally not be. So that's for, against, we don't have counselors, Fishbine, Testa, or Savoni. If I were to, if I were a betting man, I bet there's at least one more no vote in that group. But I don't know if that gives you what you need, Counselors Andrew, or, you know?
Well, it gives me, it gives me a little bit more, you know, I mean, it gives me a little bit more to look at. But I mean, I guess, you know, just to kind of respond generically to some of the things that get set, that, that have gotten said, you know, anything that, that we pass can be undone. Every single ordinance, we could, we're spending all this time discussing the littering ordinance. The next council coming through could say it's too harsh, and the fines are too much, and we should get rid of it all. So I don't think anything at any point in time that, that we spend our time discussing and voting on, pass or fail, is unimportant. And, and I, I don't think anybody meant to imply that what we're doing is not important. Anything can be quickly undone. The charter is much harder to undo, so I don't disagree that it wouldn't be better to put it there. Um, you know, I, to the comment of, of, you know, this is not necessary, maybe we should, you know, we really don't have to do it. I disagree. The, the state of Connecticut does it. Now, I understand, again, to Janice's point, the state has a cap. There's got to be a reason for it. If they wanted to undo it, then they could vote to undo it. I'm sure with, with, you know, the legislative ordinances that they're just kind of pushing through right now with all these resolutions, if they wanted to exceed the cap, they could say it's a COVID emergency, and we're gonna let the cap fly, and we're gonna stuff all the savings we can, because when we're on the other side of it, we're gonna be spending everything to kickstart the economy. So I, you know, I, I, I kind of look at it like if, if we think it's important, we should do it. And, and to the idea that we can tackle this every budget, we can, we can take $7 million that's unallocated every single year and move it into something. And the mayor, any mayor, I'm not picking on Mayor Dickinson, any mayor can choose not to do anything with it, and it goes back in. The, the entire idea of the cap means something has to happen. Now, it comes back into the other discussion piece. Well, that's what we used to have way long time ago. That's why we bought reams and reams of paper, because we had this line item that was gonna go away. And we wanted to make sure that we spent it, because we didn't want to lose it the next year. Now it'll be an argument of, well, we had to buy 10 million paper clips, because we had all this money, and we had to spend it, because it's a requirement. We're not allowed to save anymore. So, you know, maybe we have to create an ordinance, and then on top of that, directly specify what needs to happen, because if we leave it too broad, it gets put into a line item that never gets spent, it gets rolled back just because that's the normal part of the process. So, you know, again, I, I, I think the spirit of what's trying to be done here is the fact that we continue to grow a surplus for a rainy day. Um, there are funds that we allocate into the budget that never get used. You know, we, we, and I shouldn't say never, let me, let me backtrack that. We allocate the reserves. There's been some years we've used some of it. We put $6 million in, we've actually used. The worst occasion I think I've got in my records is a million and change, but the following year, we go and we add in the 6 million again, and put it all back and stick another $700,000 on top of it. At the end of the day, it's a moving target. I understand that. It's, it's less than 1% of the whole budget overall. You're never gonna hit zero. The problem that I have is that we never allocate to do anything with it. We, we basically buffer it into the budget to make it whole. And we often don't use it, and then we end up surplusing more, like this, this prior year. And there are people that are not getting representation out of that tax money. They pass away, they move. They don't get an opportunity to use a refurbished community pool, or a refurbished senior center, or a brand new paved road, because they're gone now. That would actually have to be money pulled out of there to actually be explicitly used for that, and then to actually get some benefit out of it. And, and this is what I'm trying to say. If, if it's forced that it must be allocated for something, we'll end up, we're not, we're not foolish. The person that sits in the mayor's office today, and somebody in the future hopefully won't be foolish either. They're gonna allocate that money. If we have to spend it, we'll fix an additional road. If we have to spend it, we'll change the windows in town hall to make them more efficient. So, I mean, these are different things that, that can be done when the money must get spent. And, and that's really what we're looking at. But, but I agree with you, Councilor Shortile. I think it's a close call right now, and I don't know, and I don't know if there's enough support for it. And I, I am not going to, I'm not going to look to move money to a line item to spend on a lawyer unless I can get a little bit better feeling that there's a lot more go than no. We're like right on the border, maybe depending on where the remaining votes come in. So I guess at this point, I, I guess I have to think about, you know, how I might want to go forward from here.
Okay, thank you. No problem. Councilor Marone?
Yeah, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You, you know, to clarify my earlier comments, I, I see the problem that Jason identifies. I agree with him on 90% of his point, but I think that I just don't agree with the solution. I think that the, any, any way to try to hamstring the, the, so, you know, it's funny, because he talks about the state, right? And the state has all these restrictions as far as, you know, how you balance the budget and so on. And yet they've carved out like 35 examples of where they don't have to abide by that. And then they take advantage of all 35 of those in any particular budget year. So I hate to create a system where we have sort of a disingenuous way of budgeting. I, I guess my goal is to get to a more honest budget and a less, you know, gimmicky budget. And so I think that, not to say that we have a dishonest, honest budget now, but I think we have a lot of gimmicky elements that are in our budget that I think we could step away from. So I think the, the, the solution I see to the problem that you identify is more along the lines of how we budget as opposed to what we do when we have the extra money. Let's try to get us to a point, I guess, where we don't have the extra money, you know, and then, and then go from there. So, I mean, obviously, you're never gonna build a budget to have, you know, to have, you know, revenue and expenditures equal at the end of the day. But I think we have some areas where we've built in, you know, built an extra revenue in the revenue line and built in less than we intend to expand in the expenditures line. So I think you identify a real problem. I just don't know that I see the same solution. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Um, I, I, by the way, I would, the windows in town hall, I would start with the bathrooms. But anyway, Vice Chair Laffin?
I, yeah, I would go in the bathrooms too. Um, I just wanted to point out that the, the last few years, we've, the surplus has gone down by more than a million dollars a year, uh, because it keeps saying it, it's gone up, and it, it went up for a while, but the last few years it has not. And we'll see how this, this past year and this future year go. Um, and again, I just, I wanted to, yeah, Jason, Counselor Andrew's right, like, anything can be undone. Any of the ordinances can be undone. Um, but what the difference here is that when we, when we write an ordinance or we enact an ordinance, the nine of us, that we're enacting it for 48,000 people to, to limit generally, um, limit them. This would be nine people creating an ordinance to limit themselves. And it's easy for nine people to then change it whenever they want. Um, it, it's just different. It, that's a powers thing for me. Um, you know, when I studied constitutions and bylaws and, and all this stuff, um, that's, that's a limiting power. Uh, and the only place to do that appropriately, and, and actually effectively, would be, would be the charter. Aside from that, that I don't agree with the actual, the actual premise, I guess, i- if I was picking, even if those, if we were deciding on a charter amendment, um, I don't think I would support it. But, um, and on the other, on the other grounds, like, I just, I don't think the ordinance is the place that we can actually do it. I don't, I don't, I don't think so. I, I agree with Janice's, his take on that. Thanks.
Okay, um, Mr. Sardulo, 90 seconds. Go.
Chairman. Yeah, I just, just a couple of comments. One is just reinforce Jason's point about, and the conversation with Councilor Laffin, the idea that another council can come along and change it. And that's very true. But that's, that's the way government is supposed to work. That's the way our Congress works, Senate works, and that's the way we should work. All right. Another comment was made to the effect that we're reacting to a current situation. I don't quite see it that way. Uh, the general funds process and what we're discussing has been that way forever. This is not just something that's happening now. It, it affects, basically it affects our taxation each and every year. So this is an issue that is, is very representative of benefiting all of the people in the community. So that is a, a real plus for doing it, not to avoid it. And there was another statement that was made about, which I kind of agree with it in one sense. I think it was Councilor Marone was saying his, his issue was, there's a lot of quirky little things we do in the budget. And I totally agree with that. And as long as I've been following it, which has been about 13 years, I believe I've identified a whole range of issues, and I've tried to bring them up and so forth. There are a lot of quirky things. And in my opinion, they all add up to excess taxation. And this is a small step in trying to remedy that short of a new mayor, a new council, the whole thing. And I think it's very proper. There's nothing, there's nothing improper about doing it. But yes, I agree. You'd have to get the council to agree to it, and I certainly would agree with that. Uh, and I also, last comment, I think the council, in my opinion, my humble opinion, has demonstrated that it has, it, it should understand that it has more power than it thinks it has. At least that's what I see out here. There's a lot of, we're go right up to the, the line on some issues. We get pushed back and we stop, and nothing gets done. Uh, and I just think it's something that should be pursued at least to bring forth to the council and take a vote, and whatever the vote is, that's what we gotta live with, because that's democracy.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Sardulo. Um, so Jason, I think I'm just gonna pull this off, be sure, and if you want to put it back on, just let me know, but I, I'm gonna.
Yeah, why don't we, why don't we do that? We'll, we'll remove it from the cycle. I'll, I'll figure out how to approach, how to continue, and then I'll, I'll just send you another message to consider to add it back on at some point. I don't think, I, I don't think there's enough forward motion on it right now.
Got it. Okay. Um, I think that is all the business we have tonight. Janice, thank you for being on, and I'm sorry. I hope you're not mad at us for talking about getting other legal opinions. I hope you're all.
I take no personal offense. Been there, done that.
Right. All right. Well, uh, we ended before eight o'clock. If I end in the next 18 seconds, so that's a miracle. So happy Groundhog Day and have a good night, everybody. See you next Tuesday.